All right, welcome. It's Monday, December second, six thirty one P M. Calling to order our Fairfield Community School District work session. Roll call, please.
Mark Porter.
Here.
Ty Ward. Absent. Christie Castle. Absent. Megan Dowd Robbins.
Here.
Mark Thornton.
Here.
Devin Williamson. Absent. Daviesburn.
Here.
Okay, um, so first up on the agenda, convention notes from the I S B convention. So big ideas, takeaways. How do we wanna run through these? Just through the list or around the room?
Just talk about different sessions we attended or?
We've got the. I don't know whose whose notes are here um on the page, but.
So it looks like you guys had a weekly update where you guys put some notes on there.
Yeah, so we uh. On the top of the list is um, I'm thinking maybe this is are these Deborah's notes?
I can look at the version history and see. Yeah.
Homeschool.
Marks as well. Deborah and Mark Thornton.
Okay, um. I'm not sure. What? Maybe we'll just start with anyone else in the rooms notes first, maybe um from sessions. Or we can talk about the settlement policy because I know that's one that so some of us went to a session on. I'm not sure what she has down for the first homeschool assistance program, field trips. I think that's what she's talking about.
Out of instructional support levy.
I went to A I integration. You you saw me give you a few thoughts on the couple of ones that we each went to or?
Sure, and then maybe we'll just adjust the list as we go down and.
So I went to the A I integration, which I thought was interesting because to be honest, I've been a little out of the loop on that. I'm I haven't really been real familiar in how that's working. I learned a lot about G Chat G V T. Uh, one of the things I was unaware of is that Chat G V T doesn't really work like Google works. It's more of a thing to bounce ideas off of and bounce things off of. But they also talked about cheating policies and how schools are working to adjust that with with cheating because there's individuals that think that they can just uh go in and essentially explain Chat G P T exactly what is it they're wanting to uh write and it just writes it for them. But I think that they kind of have found that that doesn't really work that well when you do it that way. So it's it's more of a tool that kids are having to use them. One of the things about it is is that they're trying to teach kids as to how to use that, you know, going into the workforce and going into the real world, so on and so forth. So. I thought that was pretty interesting. The world is changing quickly in that regard and.
Yeah, I was in that session as well. It was very interesting. Um. She did, the the speaker did talk about creating policy around how to use A I um and I think that might be something we look at, you know, and acknowledge, hey, teachers should use it, you know, how are we using it in some way and how can we just sort of build the right culture around its use um. And also maybe a policy in place around sort of the negative elements that it can bring about um in terms of deep fakes and bully, you know, those sorts of things. So maybe we'll we can make a note to have our policy committee look at that.
That's a good idea.
I think the biggest thing is learning to use it as a tool and, you know, not using it to do the work for you, but you learning it to use it as a tool to get your work done.
Yeah, and I guess.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, there are some states that have policy guidance already around this, but Iowa is not one of them, but this um like the speaker did provide a variety of um on her website, there's a lot of policy guidance and and sort of best practices around that, so.
I think it'd be interesting to get John's perspective too, the technology perspective of what he has to lock down, what depending on what the policy is created has, there may be things he has to cut out, which would be interesting to see what he would have to do.
Yeah, so best practices for responsible adoption is basically what we're looking at. Okay.
Can we go to any other topics or?
Yeah. Getting back to that big idea idea sheet, um. Well, I think, did we all? How many of us went to the poverty awareness session? Yeah, that was informative, I think. Um. I think a couple of things struck me. I was just thinking how do how we fundraise, how we reward certain kids who fundraise or not. That comes that kind of, you know, when we do these fundraisers that reward only the kids that are able to raise funds, um, we're kind of drawing a line that's unnecessary, maybe. Um.
What'd they say about that?
I didn't, I mean, I didn't really bring, that's just a, you know, a reaction I had to listening to, you know, trying to sort of level things out for kids in that regard, not put extra attention and draw attention to the fact that they weren't able to do whatever was required for the day of awesomeness.
Yep.
Yeah, hers was a lot of examples, which made you think outside the box along those lines. Just how do you incorporate it? Again, I was waiting for the next steps, but I think if you was talking about it, pretty much they wanna come in and help you do that, so.
Yeah, it was a sales pitch.
Yeah.
For lack of a better way to say it, but really this idea of being poverty informed um as educators because just like students that um struggle with other learning types of disabilities or um barriers that may be in place, it's it's no different from that, but oftentimes we um even if we maybe grew up in poverty in some capacity, still may not be as informed as we could be or should be. But I do think it would be a you know, if we wanted somebody like that to come in and and work with with our staff, that would be a commitment um at the board table to to invest in something like that. Um.
Yeah, I guess I don't know what the current sort of level of kind of awareness is and would it be necessary, you know, like how necessary is it um is it talked about at all throughout any P D processes, but.
I wonder if it would be beneficial at the board table to look at like how we're using our at-risk dollars and our dropout prevention and some of our different title programming from the counselor lens and to see some of the things that they're using their skill sets on that might address poverty in other areas, more of like an informative or connected to learning or.
Yeah.
Um, because we do get like six hundred thousand dollars a year and um at-risk dropout prevention money. Um.
Of which the majority of those funds go towards staff.
Staff.
People selling.
Counselors and. Who would have interactions with? The homeless liaison would be another great guy. Might have some good insight.
Yeah.
I don't know if anyone else was in there with me or not. It was, I think it was Council Bluffs, um, and it was really how does the board keep student success at the center of what they do? Um, so there was some stuff that I felt like was kind of fluffy, but um, a couple of takeaways that I thought we could implement pretty easily. Um, they do like round robins with building principals. Obviously, it's a much larger district, but we could have our four building principals come in, um, just kind of set up, you know, almost like speed dating within the the boardroom and two of you could meet with each building principal for ten or fifteen minutes in a work session. They could give you some stuff and you could ask questions that maybe you wanna talk with them a little more intentionally about. Um, that was something they do at once a year. And I thought that was a pretty good idea um from just a connection and um communication standpoint.
We, so last year we were doing something. I forget how it was. We were trying to have that have the principals, I think like one one principal there every month or something like that, you know, I I that is one thing I do think we need to implement a little bit is because a few years ago, we really started to get a disconnect from building leadership and and what was going on here and and I do think that we need that to make good decisions at our table, you know, because we were we were solely relying on the superintendent's opinion at that point and maybe that was where some things maybe went wrong, you know.
Sure.
You know.
Yeah, so our first role will be the sixteenth um high school year.
Yeah.
And then we'll have that every single month.
That's great.
That'll be part of.
Yep.
Focus on learning. Um, but that's more like of a kind of a presentation. It a little more formal. I'm I'm thinking if we could maybe build, maybe it's twice a year, we could build something in where it's a little less formal um that you guys could sit down with just for, like I said, ten fifteen minutes and.
That'd be great, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, kind of along those same lines of communication, I was at a session with um Inconie Superintendent and Board President. And just a couple of points about when they, you know, they had actually every month you two board members would get together and meet for coffee or whatever, and you would kind of each month meet with somebody different just to kind of create, you know, a good working relationship. Um. I thought that was interesting um in terms of just board harmony. Um. And then another thing that they would do is each month, uh, I think when the board president and superintendent are building the agenda, like one board member rotates in to kind of be involved in that process as well, which I think is a great way to create transparency and not make it seem like, you know, I so anyway, that's a kind of a question, I guess, for how do we wanna make sure we're communicating the best way and getting everybody's feedback onto the, you know, into the room where we're working on agendas and giving them on the right agendas and.
Yeah, that's a great way to build efficacy and just believe in a process. I mean, having a rotation, I think that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be good just to see how the process works, I mean.
So that'd be once a month, usually the week prior to the.
Second week before the coordinating.
Yep.
Kind of coordinate something.
So that one of the other six would just come to our standing weekly meeting.
Yeah, I think so. If they can, yeah. If they want, if you want to, you don't have to take an extra meeting, but.
One I went to was on the sportsmanship. I think it was Waverly Shellrock. Essentially, they just put in a program where they more or less, you know, reward kids and kids sign agreements when they go to the student sections and stuff like that and they just practice really good sportsmanship and they just uh encourage that stuff. Did you go to that as well, Lev, in there?
No.
No, but that all spawned from some
Yeah.
Some say prior things that happened in Waverly Shellrock. That's why they do that now, which they took, they took action.
I don't think they touched on that, so.
Yeah, but no, it's, I mean, it's good that they put something in place.
Yeah. But uh, but yeah, no, I I I found it was really encouraging or whatever. I think they have like an advisory committee of student athletes, you know, that help guide that a little bit and some stuff like that, which I don't think we've had any incidents in a while, but just being a young dad of sports and stuff like that, you know? I think you you go to sporting events of eight-year-olds and you see parents yelling at umpires and so on and so forth. That gets you pretty, pretty sick to your stomach pretty fast, so. Just s- something like that. I think if if, you know, if we do run into problems, if we can enact that in the district, I think that'd be great, you know? But so far, I haven't heard anything for a couple of years of anything that's happened. Two years ago, I think we had a couple of incidents, but recently, I think it's been pretty good, so.
Are we still under a particular item or are we just kind of?
I think we're kind of going around since this was Deborah's list by and large, um, but let me see if we can touch on some of these topics. Um.
Add one while you're looking if that's our reason. So one of the things I got out there when I thought about measurable goals, um Anthony Mohammed was speaking about culture and a lot of different things during our keynote. And one of the things he mentioned that seemed very easy to implement is three-year retention rate of our new hires. So I took like the nineteen teachers that we hired last year and then three years from now, see what percentage of them are still here as a good measure of cultural success. So I thought that'd be something that we could probably, I mean, it's easy for me to implement. I know that was today and three years from now.
Yeah, it could be something we add under our belonging.
Like make belonging as a measurable thing for belonging. I just felt that was very practical.
There's something on that. Whatever they call that site we were on last last time with retention, isn't there? Isn't there a stat on that on that?
Oh, and I was school.
Yeah, whatever the performance.
I think that tracks more like dropout and.
I thought there was one on the staff, which I could go look, but I but it's not like you're saying more. It's more like this year, the next year versus like you're saying like a three-year.
Yeah, so his research indicated that three years really measures the healthy culture. So if you lose thirty percent in three years, there might be something you need to start tweaking in forms of culture.
Staff retention was an additional metric that you could look at under that.
I mean, it's a really high level. It basically gives you a percentage of like from year to.
This metric reports the percentage of teachers, administrators, and other licensed professionals who remain employed in the same school building, same school building. Why would it not be?
In the district.
The district. Few below.
Maybe they use they use their own word there.
Well, and how does that relate to changes that we just make as a district as a whole of last year? Financially, we made some decision decisions, so those teachers will hopefully be shown up on or staff showing up on someone else's discharge as employment. It doesn't mean we didn't retain them. We did, well, we didn't retain them, but it wasn't a cultural thing, but.
Yeah, so that they have that broken down in this additional metrics. On the performance profile.
But I definitely like your idea of a three-year because that's just year to year where the three-year would be an interesting one to see how many years staying and that that's probably the cusp of the.
So that's in our school performance. Well, I can look at average, I know what it is.
Yep, it's that one I shared at the last board meeting. And if you go to additional.
Yeah.
Metrics, it's toward the bottom.
Okay.
I went to the cellphone policy. Are we, are we looking still? Sorry.
I'm not, I'm not.
You're not. Okay, I didn't know if we were done with that.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Um, so I went to this, there was a session on cellphone policy. Um. And um, nothing revolutionary there, but I will just share my couple of notes here. Um, one thing that was kind of interesting was the high school, um, I can't remember who was presenting, but they uh, had the social studies uh class do like a research project on how many times uh kids got interrupted during the day with dings. Um, so they did a data collection on that, like with their updates. Uh, you know, maybe as a way of kind of priming the the kids to kind of become aware of really how much uh they their stu- their schooling is impacted. Um. They also brought up the point of equity of learning for all. So some classrooms, it was allowed, other classrooms it wasn't. Um. And they shared that eighty-five percent of their staff were said, yes, please, let's have a cellphone policy. Um, they, these two schools had pocket charts in classrooms rather than um just saying no to phones, so. I, you know, I think they just had four uh classes in a day, so there's far less, you know, trend, you know, seven classes, you gotta pick up that phone and move around a lot, but. Um, so I don't know, there's a, there was kind of a uh, a variety of ways that the two schools did it, but I think, you know, they're, what they emphasized with is that they're just evolving their process. So they started this year, they, you know, in the beginning of the summer, they said, we wanna start and they started in the beginning of the year and they're just kind of, this is an evolutionary process, you know, and we'll keep probably enhancing it or, you know, making it more str- strict as um as it as they go along, but they seemed to say that everything was more positive um with the cellphone policy ban in place.
Where are we at with our cellphone? Do we do we end up doing anything there or not?
No, no. Our plan is to roll something out in the fall.
Yeah.
Um, I think now there's talk that legislation, there's gonna maybe be a law as well that comes out.
So it would be out of our hands at that point anyways, or?
Potentially if it passes.
Yep.
I think we need to make sure we have a plan.
But what is that, what is that law going to entail exactly? Just?
All I've seen is it's some type of a cellphone ban in schools. That's all I've seen. I don't know if there's been any other.
I just, I I just read that it's coming, but I haven't seen details of what it's like.
But what's the principal's opinion on that at this point? Are they in agreement? We need to put a total ban in the building or what what have they, what have you heard so far?
I think i- if we, yes, they're in support of something that's going to allow for kids to be disconnected intentionally during the academic day. Um, but again, it comes back to management and really who's gonna be responsible for that. So is it teachers? Is it administrators? Is it a collaborative effort? Um, because we can sit here and make a policy, but it it's up to them to operationalize it properly and um implement it.
Yep.
Properly. So I I don't remember who I was talking with, but I think getting Tristan um to get a group together at the high school and get them together and I can maybe sit down with them, um get some input from them too, because I I do think kids, they know, like deep down, they know that better. I mean, I think they do.
Yeah.
I mean, it's
Just hard.
Is it currently a free-for-all or is it basically come down to classroom and the teacher's own policy?
It's pre- I would say it's pretty much a free-for-all. There's some teachers, but not very many that is at the high school. The middle school is pretty much a non-issue. There's very few um issues and at the lower levels, it doesn't seem like there's any at Washington or Pence.
When I was ancient high school or whatever, I wouldn't have dreamed of pulling my cellphone out and doing something on it in the middle of the classroom. It just never even crossed my mind.
Right.
Young, you had a cellphone.
But you but you couldn't, you couldn't do anything anyways. You could just, you know, text with the.
I know they.
Sign, did you?
Pad or whatever.
With that.
Senior year at the cellphone minutes.
But maybe that's something the policy committee can also start looking at.
We've got a couple of examples.
We have examples.
From I S B.
And I think, you know, if the state does come up with something, if it's, if we don't feel it's enough for what we want, I think we can layer on additional um measures, I guess.
There were a couple that I went to that all referenced the same book for the four di- the four disciplines of execution. So I think at least two, if not three of the sessions I went to all mentioned it in some form or fashion and uh.
Who's the author?
Uh, Alex Cubby.
Who's Cubby?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so it's one of those like, I think there's good things in there and one even went to the, uh, they were uh, A D M. They went as far as like all buying into basically picking one goal and sticking to it. So district-wide, they really focused on that and made it a huge like rah rah uh, deal and they had the stats to prove it that it worked. So I think it'd be interesting to see, they chose like reading scores. So they came out with the superintendent came down and basically said from the results we have, basically a quarter of our kids are non-proficient in reading. And so they took that and made a huge initiative and went through some of the points of these four disciplines to basically run it and say, we're gonna focus directly on this and everything should be tied to this to execute on. And over, I forget how many years it was, maybe three, they went and they had like different percentages by grade breakdown. Wasn't every grade with grouped grades in certain groups and everything on them went up to at least ninety percent. And so it's just kind of interesting as we're learning more and trying to figure out what to do to bring in some of those concepts of if we try and do eighty things, we're not gonna do any of them good. We're just gonna barely touch on them. Or if we really find something to focus on, hopefully we can see some growth in that.
Yeah, Christie I know went to, was that the same session? Does she go to that A D M?
Yeah, she's kind of host of it too, but yeah, she was really excited about it.
So yeah, she was very excited about the that focus and she shared a lot of info back with um regard to their presentation and curriculum.
I think that part started though before they switched to C K L A. I think C K L A was just in the last year. I think that started earlier.
Yeah, and the numbers they showed, I can't remember the graph, but it seemed like like three years, three or four years, they had started showing from that twenty-five percent non-proficient to this last year's results there.
That sounds a lot like what Spencer Schools, you know, they presented last year on their wildly important goal and that was their one focus and they saw, you know, strong growth there, so. And then we've got the literacy group meeting, so maybe maybe we can kind of be on to that, build on some layers of focus on on our reading.
And they had an interesting concept of it of you had to almost mark at the bed. So like they have very like within their administration team and then as they took it to the building levels, like it was very graphic oriented of like there's thirty thirty of you in in here, you know, every fourth, one of you step forward, like you do not hurry. And like stats of like, you know, four people graphic on the screen and one of, you know, to make it very visible of this is the goal we're all trying to achieve.
With the staff?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think they even did some type of community type of one, but I can't remember all the details on that, but it's it was very much a, you don't highlight your bad, but giving people how bad it is really gives them motivation to wanna be a part of the solution was kind of what they were going after. And they even had check-ins like, I think some were even weekly to where it was, hey, I've touched these kids, hey, I've touched these kids. And if they hadn't, it wasn't a shame on you. It was more of a how can we help you reach those kids so we can all get to that goal? So it was very cool. And the other one on that, since we're there, in that document, I pasted one Marion School District. They kind of did the same thing. They did a book study. I don't know if it was forty X or if it was another similar one. Uh, but they had the visual that's in there where they use it in most of their meetings. And so there's four quadrants and wanna see, think, wonder, and recommend. And so it's just one of those to kind of jot down what are you seeing? Like, what are you hearing, seeing? And then what are you thinking about that? And then what are you wondering about it? Like, do we get more stats, you know, all kinds of things there? And then what do you recommend? To kind of really break it down and then out of the meeting have a recommendation back of going through that of, here's what I saw, here's what I think, here's what I'm wondering about, and here's what I think I recommend to go after something. So their meetings are very targeted on being interactive and having a goal at the end, basically.
Anyone else?
What was the grandparents in the last?
Yeah, so that came after um or during our finance uh conversation, um, we were kind of brainstorming some ideas on how to be more fiscally responsible. And um, I was talking about a program we had up at my last school district called Foster Grandparents. And grandparents would come in to do things like cover recess duty or um cover lunch duty or just help laminate or make copies or just a way to free up staff time so they could. Just a way to free up staff time so they could get a break or potentially require less. Staff, I can't really put the numbers on it, if we got less staff, but we got more staff. Flexibility, I guess he would actually get like a lunch break or different things like that, and it was just a volunteer basis, um they all went through a background check and then. It was just grandparents and they just ate lunch with kids and go play kickball or do whatever they can, um.
Did they have any kind of training or?
Yeah, so we actually did like a memorandum of understanding, so we actually partnered with a couple of different um entities in town. And we drafted an MOU of. Essentially criteria, kind of like a job description, like you gotta be able to meet these kind of needs, um, what we ran into with some health issues. That we had to address, um, but then they would do just kind of a small little training with administrators. On whatever tasks they're doing, but they were pretty much regular.
What age group was this with?
Uh for the majority of all of them, but their little kids really, really liked it.
Yeah, cause currently who who runs the lunchroom, just is it a rotating schedule or?
Administrators, I've been there before, um, teachers.
Parents, administrators, teachers depending on the day.
So we just thought it was a really good way to potentially get interaction of even outside and doesn't just have to be grandparents, it was just a. Session, but I've seen in action, but. See the community, get involved in the school, get involved with the kids in a healthy, interactive way.
So you guys get pulled into like field trips and all kinds of stuff, depending on, cause I know you were on a field trip a few weeks ago, is that just because you're the shortest after?
Um, I mean, I've always told the teachers, if you need help or, I mean, finding substitutes is hard, I mean, as my. Job allows me to, I don't really need a sub, so it's easy for me to step in, um. Starting actually this month, I'm gonna spend eleven to one in a building every Wednesday, um, once a week. I'm just helping out, so that could be anything from lunch duty to recess duty to answering questions, um. When they've been really short, there's kind of a group chat, like, hey, can anyone cover lunch and? Myself, John, whoever has stepped in several times. When Zach's taking them to professional development, me and John have covered the buildings as kind of administrators in charge, but we're just gonna plan ourselves for. Start in the morning in one place, go to the other building in the afternoon, so.
That's great.
What group would that kind of fall under? We were gonna talk about that again, which committee I guess.
What do you mean, like them filling in or?
Yeah, I mean, if it's if if this idea was something we wanted to pursue, which committee?
Oh, the grandparents.
Yeah, the grandparents.
Start with human resources on drafting, like actually what the. Duties entail, um, I definitely would wanna run it by like the administrators first. To see what kind of assistance they need, because I only have examples from other.
Cause it, yeah, and I know we're also talking about building our substitute pool, so maybe these two ideas together. Could be something.
Well, that's what I thought it could be a great way to, I don't know, try it out before we sign up to be a full-time staff, like maybe come in for an hour. See what a day in the life looks like.
A few years ago, we kind of looked into something similar like that to that, I think there was. There's been a handful of schools that started something called Dads on Duty, I don't know if you guys have heard something about that, but it's more or less, you know, maybe some of these younger schools where. You know, maybe the kids don't have a large male influence because of, you know, a variety of reasons, you know, especially those elementary buildings, just. A handful of dads coming in and helping out at recess or whatever, you know, maybe just to kind of. Give some young kids the opportunity to be around that, um, we looked into that a few years ago. Kind of when I very first got on the board, kind of when everything was going on and I definitely ever materialized, you know, but but. I'm sure there's a handful of dads that'd be willing to volunteer, I I did talk to Mrs. Townsend about, you know, myself being willing to do it, but. Trying to get that to work for my schedule is pretty challenging, but it would be neat to do something like that, you know.
And set it up in a functional way that.
Well, the biggest thing is just, you know, you you have to get some type of rotating schedule there and actually getting that to work with, you know, people like me or Mark or Evan or whoever, you know. Where you can rotate that into your actual work schedule is a pretty challenging thing, you know, but, I mean, to really listen and make it work, you need twenty dads to, you know, do it now. I'll take this Thursday, I'll take this Thursday, you know, just go play kickball with them or help them watch a recess, I mean. Watching a recess, so a teacher can use that time to do prep work or planning time, I'm sure. Extends them a huge thing, but you have to get through a background check, I think, and a few other things, you know, for them to really do that. Obviously, that is a little bit of responsibility, watching all those kids, you know, I'm good for my kids, I'm really not that good with other people's kids. So, but I'm just kidding, but.
Yeah, so the whole conversation stemmed from just gonna ask the question of, is there a way that we can get volunteers in the school to help us out, so.
Yeah, I think it's good for community culture too, to feel connected to the school. People wanna help, but it's like, how do, how do you plug in, but we've gotta do it in a way that's not burdensome to the admin team. Has to be functional. Um, I I, you know, like homeschool, field trips, this is something that I know I talked with Deborah about at dinner one night, maybe Christie was there. Um, so I'll just fill in what we spoke about, I'm not sure exactly what her intentions were with this note, but. We were just talking about the benefits of traveling and and, you know, just all the trips that we, students currently take, like to New York and. Where else do they go, DC? Um, but then in the past, I think we've had homeschool teachers who've taken kids even to like. Uh Belize and other places like that, so um, I think just kind of putting it out there that it's, maybe there's some opportunity to create. An interesting homeschool, maybe it's not even just homeschool, it's homeschool and other kids program for a summer, taking some trips somewhere. To do, you know, study and. Service. I think that was the note there, um, also just kind of, you know, creating a unique edge to our homeschool program, or finding, you know, those those things that might pull. Uh, you know, build up our homeschool program. Change culture, I'm not sure what that note is there, aside from all the things we're talking about. Uh, mental health care, does anyone have any insight on that one? There's some vendors there, maybe that was a vendor she spoke to, but.
There's a lot of them.
Don't know what the grant from endowment means, but. Year-round school.
Yeah, that was another thing that came up during um, kind of that financial session, um. We were just talking about ways to be, they kept hearing enrollment, 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 and what's a way that we could be competitive? So one of the things that's been floating around has obviously been like four days school, like, school weeks, um. So then we started playing around with the idea of what if we had a four-day week, but all year round school. Cause if we go to a four-day week and a lot of our neighboring districts already have, are we really being competitive? Um, and then we started talking about the transition or the potential benefits you can get on the curriculum side of it with the smaller gaps and. In between and continuous, um. That conversation was related to like our transition, here's like fifth grade and ninth grade, they could see the gaps, I wonder if. The year-round school might help with some of that gap and benefit the. Academic side of it too and just creating a competitive advantage, so.
Yeah, it's certainly something that's, I know some schools are doing that, you said, you you know someone or?
The state of Indiana has, I would say, a fair amount of schools that do this or districts that do this. It's usually in early August, first of August, first week of August to start, um, they'll take a full week off in October, usually for a fall break. Um, at least two, sometimes three weeks off over the Christmas holiday, the holiday break, um, two weeks off during spring break. And then they'll go um usually to late June, third week of June, um and take four or five weeks off. And get back at it, those are five, they go five days. From a financial. Fiscally, you know, responsible standpoint, I don't, I would, I have no idea if that would save any money or not, I I don't know.
It'd be hard to pencil out.
I don't, I don't think many s- districts or any do that in Iowa, cause really legally, you're not allowed to start until after August twenty-third anyway. The or the first Monday after the state fair, but if you never stop, maybe it doesn't.
Twenty-second and they come back the twenty-fourth.
We don't start the new year until August.
Yeah, I'd be interested to see, you know, perfor- academic performance data in those in schools that have switched to year-round. Just to see without that three month, you wouldn't have to have summer school, I guess. And there's some benefit there, but. That's obviously a huge, huge change.
Yeah, the ideas were just flowing, so.
Ideas, just, just kind of. Considering it all, um. I guess that's it on our sheet, does anybody else have? Any other thoughts? Well, if you do, you can always direct them to committee or, you know, they talk about, you know, something comes up later, so keep the ideas flowing. Alright, up next, uh superintendent mid-year review discussion.
Yeah, I would like to, if possible, go into closed session on the sixteenth, probably right after the regular board meeting. To get feedback from you, um, I know some of you said in on on these as well at the the conference, but um. Two different ones I said in on, kind of highlighted this mid-year. Performance and progress reviews, the document that I I gave each of you, um. And so what I would like to do over the next probably week and a half is just share some tangible um. Success indicators or uh indicators of progress with each of you, I'll just send you an email collectively. Um, connected to probably five different things, um, the first would be. The goals that I've set for me specific to my leadership, so the renewed mission and vision for the district that should start in the fall of twenty-five. The collaboratively analyzing current learning goals and achievement data to understand trends and kind of what we need to do moving forward. And then the third one was gaining a thorough understanding of the people's systems and systems and institutional practices within the system, so actually. Giving you some tangible things that I've either done or that I've learned so far um halfway through the year. Um, and then the other, the other thing I'd like to give specific things towards would be. There was three of the ten ISO standards that that you guys prioritized kind of as we went through that process, it goes one, four and. Eight, um, so again, mission, vision and core values, curriculum instruction and assessment and the meaningful engagement of families and communities, so. I'd give you a couple of things maybe for each of those, and then the last thing would be our two um. Specific district level goals, um student success and belonging, give you again. Um, some indicators of progress on those and you can look at those for maybe a week, have some time to look at them and then when we come together. Um, you can. Answer these questions or have these ready to go, I don't really know what best practice would would be or what that would look like, um, but yeah, just. Some time where we can, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I was just gonna say, one thing we could do, which they brought up in one of these sessions, is we could briefly, you know, just as a board. Have a conversation to kind of go over, you know, what, you know, hopefully we've done some homework, we bring it in and then we kind of go through our points together. So it's, you know, maybe kind of come up with a summary of everything and then.
Have me come back.
And then Zach can come back in and then we can.
That's not okay.
Make sense, you know?
So let's just solidify a date here, when would you drop dead need the artifacts by? If we're meeting on the sixteenth. If I got them to you on the ninth or tenth, is that enough time?
I think so.
Perfect, and then, yeah, well, we don't have to go into closed session, but I just think you'll be able to speak a little bit more openly, you know, if.
For for your own sake, I mean.
Nope, that's great.
Are there any questions?
If you want to be constructive, you know?
And so everyone has has this document.
Remember the, I was just saying the big one, the thirty whatever pager, that's really more for the kind of final.
Yeah, so this is mid-year and the plan is again later at the end of the year, we'll do.
Yeah, and I think it was kind of. A lot of times those are done late May or June, um, I would just ask that whenever we do it, it's prior to. You know, kind of the next contract negotiation, whatever that looks like, um, if that makes sense, or part of it, I don't, I don't really know. How that should look, but.
Contracts have to be issued by May fifteenth, so if we can have it before May fifteenth.
For admin too?
That's the drop dead deadline for admin is May fifteenth, yeah. It's April thirtieth for teachers. I mean, automatically.
If if I want another three-year contract.
Also, IASB's website has a lot of resources if you, you're like looking through on how to, you know. Just if you just want some additional reading material, um.
Was there any other tips or tricks you guys pulled out of that one? You mentioned the one where you basically step out and kind of have some deliberation with word, was there anything else you guys pulled out of that one? That was beneficial, useful?
We had some on the Friday too, the three of us. But I didn't, we had three panelists up there that were all current suits, I didn't get a great, I mean, I didn't, I didn't feel like that was real beneficial. It's hard because it, until, and it's not a knock on you or other, you know, presidents of the board. Like it, this is a skilled practice to to coach and evaluate and give feedback, and if you don't have experience doing that in your profession. It's hard to do, so you look to the superintendent to kind of get guidance, which is also just weird, you know?
Give us guidance on how to best uh.
One is so different than like the normal civilian world of evaluation as well, what they were talking about. How you guys seek feedback and performance and.
Talking about a three sixty, which I have no problem with, I've used those before, so that's something if the board wanted to to do.
Right, with the direct reports to Zach, so that might be something later, not at this point in time, but like at the end of, you know, prior to a May review. We could do something like that.
Yeah, they they encouraged it to be that, so, you know, like Evan's position, um, the principals. But not just a three sixty to all staff collectively, it was really to the people that I interact and serve, you know, work with or like. Intentionally throughout the course of a week. But that would be another really good, at least, feedback or data that you could use.
What was the turnout like at the board president's workshop the other day, was there a lot of people there or not or? They just started doing that two years ago, so I'm just curious if there's, if that was valuable or not.
I wouldn't go every year.
Yeah, I think they do it differently every year from what I heard someone saying, they had like a special guest speaker the year before, this was run more like a. You know, the IASB, um, Tammy and um.
It was their leadership team that.
Yeah, their leadership team and then.
And I think the other one, wasn't she?
Yeah, uh yeah, the attorney was there.
Was it worth being there for three days, like? It's a long time gone.
I absorbed a lot, I was, it was good.
My day and a quarter was plenty.
Yeah, so I'd be curious to know what sort of the. Agenda is next time before.
Cause we didn't see that, I don't think I saw that. Yeah, yeah, you just get a packet and you show up and then there it is.
Along networking with other board presidents.
Yeah, I guess what you hear most is you hear, you you break out and you hear how other schools have handled things. Which is the most helpful. Okay, well, if anyone has any questions as you're going through this material, feel free to reach out.
How'd you guys do the previous reviews that you've been part of?
They're all in closed session and then basically we were given standards to basically. Essentially score them on essentially, that we basically received a chart and then it was a. Yeah, I I have to remember exactly what each segment was, but basically you were, basically you sprayed them as though if they were exceeding expectations. Barely meeting or or not at all, you know, and then you had to give an explanation. So I think essentially I, I went in and I gave all of my scores before the meeting even started. And then the closed meeting was our opportunity to elaborate on why we evaluated, uh, how we did, you know? But, but my evaluation was done, you know, before we even walked in that room, which I recommend. Because you don't want to be, your, your evaluation to be skewed based on what other board members are doing, you know, I think it's, it's best you do that. And your own thoughts and your own mind at home the night before, whenever, you know, you know, if, if, if you want to give the superintendent the best feedback you can. Cause this is real list for the most important thing you can do as a board member. I mean, a board only has one employee, that's the superintendent, you know?
Yeah, and I know one thing Dave brought up, maybe you want to share your thoughts on just keeping notes throughout, you know, I don't know if that's okay. Me to share, but I think it's really helpful. That's a, it was a helpful piece.
So based on, I, I developed this technique years ago. And that is I keep a book. And based on each one of these things, so it's not, there's not a halo effect. Or anything else, or the availability bias. So, and I intentionally make a note every day. And it's based upon your priorities, the, the three things that we have as well as the other criteria as well. So I cite one of those criteria and then I make a note as to good performance. You know, needs improvement, whatever, and then I got, I have documentation. But the other thing that I learned is it forces you to do, I, I do it every day. There's one thing, one note, and if I don't have anything, then that means that I've disconnected. From the process. You know, I, it, that's on me. So I recommend, and then that way you can, you have the documentation. You know, date. You know, Zach. Did this, great job, you know, and it, and it's part of his priority, this, one. And, and so you cite it. So I keep it every day. And the one thing that, that I found in this whole process is that halo effect. And that availability bias is huge. You only, you only give the good or bad of the most recent. The most recent performance. Well, you know, what'd you do in the first quarter, you know? That, and so, and so it becomes, it becomes the preponderance of the evidence.
Right.
The cumulative effect of, of the performance. And, uh, so I, I, you know, that's my technique. I recommend to do that, but it also keeps you involved. You know, um, I've disconnected for a week. But that's only because I was clear out in North Carolina.
Yeah, that's, I think that's.
You're retired, you need to disconnect.
So I have that and I also think that, um. And, and I think they cited this on the Iowa Association of School Boards. But, um, there's a really good article in Human Resource Management Review that I look at. Strength break, strength-based performance appraisal and goal setting. And, uh, that's a whole different concept when you're talking about strength-based. You know, what are, what are the strengths and how can we improve those? And so that's what I'm using. I, I look at this article all the time. I look at that thirty, thirty-page monstrosity because it has really good, how you're gonna evaluate. Ineffective, that's a whole different conversation than effective or extreme, you know, whatever those other two are.
But one thing I do want to make a note of, so me and Ty, we've both been on this board for over three years and we've both only done one actual evaluation, so. So, I mean, I mean, there's only been one evaluation done to a superintendent in the last.
We can evaluate our evaluation after.
Three years, so, so.
So we get better at evaluating.
So what I'm gonna say is you're gonna be evaluated by five people who have never done one and two people that have only done one, so, you know, so.
Yeah, and maybe after this first year, we could even. I mean, I'm sure I could find somebody that could come in and give some feedback on just how, on a personal, like a former superintendent or whatever. Has been at it a long time and doesn't know what to do now.
Yeah. Anyway, Doug, to answer your question.
Yeah, and that, just to, that three sixty review also, you know, they made a point, you don't want to do it at a certain time of year, you know, like. When cuts are happening or contracts or, you know, whatever it is, it's so you don't get the halo effect or that sort of negative feedback.
I think that's the one, one thing that we need to fight more than anything else is that. That availability bias or halo effect. It can be negative or positive. And if you, if you don't keep notes over the performance period, then you're susceptible to that. The most recent performance becomes higher weighted than, and it may be. Less relevant. I'm not a big fan of three sixty, to be perfectly honest. Unless. Unless it's a, you've got a really good team because. It could be a way of. Pencil stabbing somebody.
Yeah, I think too.
I just don't, I, I don't think, and I think it, I think it diminishes someone's authority.
I see that, yeah.
I, I just, I'm not a big fan of it. I've, I've seen it in place, I've seen it tried to be worked. Both in mil, you know, this big push in the military, I think that was a terrible idea. But even in the civilian world. You know, we've dropped it. Where I, where I reside or used to reside, just because. It just wasn't working.
Yeah.
They either think, either, either think he's the greatest thing since canned beer or he's the next coming of, uh, Dracula. And it's all because of, of decisions that had to be made for the, that were the best for the organization. Not for this one individual. So I, I would just. I'm not sa- saying that it can't work or is it good, but.
That was sort of how IASB was, they weren't really a fan of, you know, they weren't.
They didn't recommend.
Certainly not recommending them, I think for those.
Just be careful on that.
Yeah.
I would. I, I can't think of a time, and probably it has, but I can't think of a time where it's ever really worked out.
Yeah, I think. The only upside or, you know, the alternative is just trying to figure out how to have that pulse that's, you know. Where we, where we were, you know, a couple of years ago without any kind of connection and, and the breakdown, I think that happened. With the board, in, anyway, it just feels like some, something maybe needed to be. Some connection with feedback needed to be heard by the board.
I think for me, just from a growth standpoint, like I can use that, not in an evaluative way, but more for, for me individually, just to grow as a person. Maybe not even something I share with you, but it's a way for them to give. Positive, negative, whatever it is, and I can take it.
Maybe it's different to, yeah. In that way.
And not to us, as reporting to us.
I'm not, I'm not talking about, that, that's a whole, that's a personal.
Yep.
Uh, team, you know, building your team, getting feedback.
Yep.
That's, that's always important, but as a formal.
Yeah.
Performance evaluation process, I just never see you work.
Yeah, that's fair. It's good feedback. Okay. Committee meeting discussion. This is the time and place where we will discuss what dates and times to have our committee meetings. So.
Well, good news.
Half our board members.
Good news, we, I think we have one for the, for our finance, correct?
We do.
December ninth, which is a Monday at eight AM.
And we're gonna, um, where are we as far as working on the agenda? I, I've lost it, I've been out.
It's done as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, done.
It's done.
Yeah.
Yep, I got it, I remember now. And we do, we do need to work on, uh, our charter, I mean, approving our charter.
Yeah, so I put that as the first item.
And so we'll have, uh. Our, our first finance committee is scheduled and we're, got our agenda.
Do we want to set that up as a recurring second Monday at eight AM of every month? Do we want to meet flat weekly? Do we wanna?
Do we need to meet monthly, finance committee? I think, is that something we need to do?
So one of the things I've thought about doing, um. Is I present, uh, like check reconciliation and my cash balances and the key measures on a monthly basis to Zach. Quarterly to the whole board and how it's all tied together. That's something on a monthly basis I'm more than willing to bring before the finance committee.
I would say once we shift from having a work session every month, then I think we should have a standing monthly committee meeting. But it doesn't have to be this huge agenda every month either. Um, and there can be months where you don't meet based on kind of the need, but. I'd see that as kind of the, the vision for where we go. Strategic planning.
That's at four PM on Monday, December ninth.
So yes.
So yes, let's just, so are we good with Monday, December, or second Mondays, eight AM? For finance?
Mm-hmm.
Ongoing unless, you know, I guess at each meeting we can just review.
Yep.
And.
You said monthly?
Monthly until we, in each meeting we'll just confirm.
Well, there. And if, you know, it's standing meaning if it need, if there's nothing to be done, we can cancel.
Say first Monday, second Monday?
Second Monday, so, does that work in January?
Thir- thirteenth.
Okay.
Yep, it's on there.
Oh, it is, great.
I've got it on my calendar.
Yeah, I do too.
Yep.
Strategic planning is the ninth of December at four PM, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, and I know.
I'm trying to remember what all that can entail exactly.
We haven't set an agenda yet.
Right, so Ty is taking over as the.
Chair.
Chair of that.
Yep.
Committee and, um, we have not set an agenda yet, so.
Okay.
You, you'll work with.
I'll reach out to him, yeah.
Uh, do, let's see, so I know, do we want to keep it at that time? Is that a good time?
It's a good time for me, so late afternoon is always the best for me, but I mean, if it doesn't work for other people, that's fine, but at least during the winter. Maybe not the rest of the year, but at least during the winter.
Yeah, I'm fine. For. So, I'll let Ty know.
Yep.
Okay, and then we have, um. Did, you, you're on the facilities committee?
Correct, yes.
Christie and Deborah.
Sounds right.
Did, did you and Chr- did Christie connect with you at all today until you?
She never.
She didn't, okay.
Contact me today, back up in the morning, I guess I heard, no, or a phone call, but.
So, yeah, maybe you guys can find a time.
For facilities.
For facilities. Who else needs to be involved in that?
It'll be me.
For sure, Evan.
Wiley's needed, he's. Whenever I send him a calendar invite, he's there, so you guys have the time that works for you and me.
He's usually pretty flexible, as far as.
Probably around three thirty or like eight AM during busing, so.
Yeah.
And ideally, we're, we, we want to have these before the board meeting each month, so the second week.
Does it need to be in the middle of the day then, or is it five o'clock too late or?
Um, it depends on the day, because I mean, someone else have after-school obligations.
Yep.
Am I, that's probably just me, but.
It's ideally, it's within the first two weeks of each month is when, when the meeting gets set.
Cause if we're able to do it five o'clock after strategic planning, that'd be great for me, but.
I got class.
I'm sorry, that's fine. What, you go back to school?
Yeah.
Alright.
You can't stay out of school.
So I guess I'll let you guys connect offline about it. Would you want to just make a date?
I am the chair of it, yeah.
How does lunch hour work for you?
I'll make it work, um.
Wednesdays are pretty open too.
What, would Fridays, Fridays on lunch hour work or?
Yeah, Fridays are great.
Is like December sixth or December thirteenth, does that work or not?
If we want to keep it on the second week, so you know, or, um. Thirteenth, we have a chili cook-off, but, um.
Yep, can't interrupt that.
If you want to do that.
The bus drivers are coming in to judge.
I mean, you might want to do it if it's a Friday, the end of the first week, just so there's a week to.
Yeah, so like the sixth is open, um, I do have a couple of things we can kind of start discussing a little bit, um. I don't know, who else is on to Christie?
Well, and if you don't need to meet, it's okay if you don't meet, but we just wanted to.
Yeah.
Set it.
Do you just want to do the first Friday of every month?
Yeah, let's, let's just start off with that. Once I get later in the year, then it'll work out.
And then I'll, I'll, I'll be joining it as needed if there's specific things.
Yeah, the bigger, I mean, in the past, the way that we've done it is essentially Josh just brings in a list of items that he's want to tackle, we talk about it. I grill with questions usually and then. Uh, well, me and Tim used to always be on with Tim every game, so it was usually just me and Lori and. Uh, Josh was pretty much, and then Robin when she, before she was there, but. Yeah, it's fine, you know, on the sixth. So this, so in three days, you guys want to do it then?
Yeah, I'll definitely check with Josh to make sure it doesn't have anything major, but I do have a couple of items, but. Here's all on that one, I want to send you.
Deborah and Christie.
You can invite me too, Evan.
Okay, so then we have policy. This is Mark Thornton and, are you on that, Dave?
I am.
Who's the chair?
Marcus.
I wonder on any of your schedules.
I like early mornings or.
Who always needs to be involved in that one?
Oh, you're involved in that one. Evan doesn't need to probably initially, unless there's something specific, unless he wants to.
Me, you and, and Megan.
Policy side is it also ties to, well, I guess it just depends what you guys set up. It ties slightly to board policy parameters.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
But.
What's your, your?
Let me Chris do those, yeah.
Um, you're, you're, you're kind of the full-time employed guy, so what's best for you?
I said non-schedules, it's okay.
You're full-time.
The one, I know you guys are busy that first week, right?
Well, we should still review things, I think, that first week, or, sorry, the, the week of the ninth.
Either one, I can do the later this week or next, or, yeah, or next week.
I'll be at the coaching academy on the tenth and eleventh with our leadership team. Both days I'm gone. Till four.
What about Thursdays or?
Later in the afternoon during that week is better for me. And then I'm gone on Fridays, on Friday of that week.
I could do Thursday really early or I've got my weekly check-ins with principals in the afternoons until three. I'd have a little time after that.
I have to do, that week I'll have to do anything after four.
Um, it, like, just this week or I'll kind of ongoing?
Or that ninth to the thirteenth.
What about the fifth?
Uh, I, I'm, I have, uh, commitment till three and then I have our own risk audit. Committee meeting at three fifteen at the bank, so I'm not available.
And your, Fridays are not good, right?
Well, the thirteenth is not good.
Okay. What about the sixth?
Yeah, is it crazy to go before the Wednesday?
Wednesday, I know Zach, you have to be like early.
The sixth, I'm, um. I can do early in the morning, but then I'm up at William Penn University after. Um, eleven, probably after ten thirty or eleven.
Friday at eight?
Friday at one.
On the sixth?
Friday at eight? I guess we can just discuss if that works ongoing or we want something different.
That's policy.
Policy.
And what else do we need?
And then we have HR.
Negotiations.
Negotiations, and that's Christie and. Who's that?
I'll look quick.
Christie, me and Deb.
And Deb.
Then I can just set it in the.
It's up to you. Is there something to go over this month for, for that group?
Well, probably no. I guess what you could do is come to the salary schedule conversation on Wednesday, the eleventh. Um, I could ask, ask their, the teacher team if that's okay, we're meeting at three forty-five. That'd be the only thing that I would say might be beneficial if one, you know, if one or all three of you wanted to come to that. Probably like give them a heads up. Probably like give them a heads up.
If they're okay with it.
If they're okay with it. So three forty-five, it's out here.
On the eleventh.
Yeah, it'll be, it's been just me, Evan, and then three or four teachers um. From the union. And we're at a spot where we've given them. I mean, all the, the information that probably they would need and probably more than, more than enough, um just from a. Costing standpoint and then um also shared a um, just a different way to look at a salary schedule based on pools. As opposed to stepping lane. So. We've let them kind of drive, drive so far, so it's been, it's been okay.
I think we can plan on that and then you can let us know.
Yeah, I'll let you know before the end of the week if, I don't know why they would say no, so, yeah.
Will you reach out to?
Yeah, I'll reach out to those too.
Cool, that, that's all of them, right?
That's it, yeah, and that is everything on our agenda.
And we're keeping the work sessions still starting in January, we're gonna keep that going until we decide otherwise.
To, I don't know, yeah.
Well, I mean, what's your thoughts? Do we, do we need to keep the work sessions going around all these committees?
I think, I think what we said is we'd keep it on the calendar, but then depending on. How the committee works going, what the reports look like, how people are feeling, just from a informed standpoint, we just.
What's the expectation then for?
Well, I, I, could we have work sessions the same night as the board, regular monthly board meeting?
You could, just, I mean, it could be a really long time.
It's the way I operate, I'd, I'd prefer to be here for six hours one night and only have to see you once a month, but.
So my experience with that is there's usually a board report, reports, committee reports.
Report at.
And they may have.
The board meeting.
Correct, and it may be a three-minute deal, maybe a thirty-second deal, or hey, we didn't meet, there's nothing to meet on.
So that'll be on the agenda.
I, starting on the sixteenth.
Starting on the sixteen.
I, I do feel like there needs to be some type of opportunity to air things out outside of the monthly board meeting about, you know, what, whatever items we learn in the committees. But I think, do you think the goal behind the committees is to not have to have a meeting two Mondays, um, two Monday nights a month, you know? So however we wanna wanna do that, but. But no matter what, I, I judging by where we've been at the last year and where we were at within my first year, you don't wanna have six. Meetings a month or whatever it could turn into if you're not careful, you know, so. Cause it can get pretty demanding if you're not careful, it doesn't sound like much until. Oh, boy, I have to be here, oh, I have to be here, I have to get another, another monthly, another board meeting.
Yeah, we've had three Mondays in a row too, so.
The last three weeks have been a little bit, looked pretty intense for a board, but.